My name is David Behringer and I am the Chair of the Tax Supervising and Conservation Commission, Committee, Commission, and I welcome you all to our hearing this morning. Before I introduce my fellow commissioners and staff, I thought for the new people on the City Council, I would just give a brief introduction of what the TSCC is. So I just have a short statement here. The tax created by in Oregon by legislation enacted just over 100 years ago. Originally, the TSCC had the final word on each district's budget, but that was found out to be legal. And in the modern world, we have a much more limited role. There are only one TSCC in Oregon, there's a county, Washington County is also large enough to qualify for TSCC, but they have chosen a different approach. Yes, and represents.
I'm sorry to interrupt. Are other people hearing problems or am I the only one? Chair, could you turn off your video and see if that your bandwidth is a little low. So it's dumpy. Could you turn off your video and maybe that will help?
Okay, thank you. So the TSCC protects and represents like interest and ensures that Mountain Noma County local governments comply with state budget laws. It provide provides economy and efficiency for the local governments and provides advice and assistance to each of them. There are 43 districts within Mountain Noma County that are eligible to be part of TSCC and 32 of them are members. The commission holds about 13 budget hearing, even ballot measures. During a budget hearing, the TSC serves as the voice for the citizens and the taxpayers. That and these budget hearings occur before the district adopts a budget fine adopts the final budget. The TSCC may inquire about any aspects of the budget. They may also take actions to make sure that the the local government is following budget law. The TSC may also make recommendations to make sure that the budget practices follow the local budget law. Finally, the TSCC certifies each of their budgets and without certifications, the district can submit the tax levies to the county assessors. With that, I will let my fellow commissioners introduce themselves as well as the TSCC staff. And if they have any business relationship with the district that could be perceived as a conflict of interest.
Thank you all for being here. Good morning. I'm James Offsink and Vice Chair of the TSCC. This is my sixth year with the TSCC and so six, six time with the city of Portland's budget. Thank you all for being here this morning. I look forward to speaking with you. And I don't have any business relationships with the district. So nothing that could be perceived as a conflict of interest.
Good morning. I'm Margot Norton. I'm also in my sixth year with the commission. I live in northeast Portland. I am retired, although my career was in government finance. My last post at retirement was as the CFO at Metro, the regional government. I have no conflicts with the district.
Good morning, all. My name is Mark Lebold. This is my fifth year with the TSCC. My day job, I'm the Senior Policy Analyst in the President's Office of Portland State University. And I have no conflicts of interest with the district.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Harmony Kido. This is my second year with TSCC. Nice to see many of you again. I am a K to 12 educator by by trade. I work in science education. And I, while I have no conflicts of interest with the district, there are four first graders in my house today. So I apologize for any background noise. My husband is wrangling them, but you never know.
I am Craig Gibbons. I'm staffed to the commission.
Yes, Tony Betchard staffed, yes.
Great. With that, I will ask the district representatives to please introduce themselves.
Mayor Wheeler, maybe we can start with you. The district's going to introduce yourselves.
I'm sorry. You want me to introduce myself?
Yes, please.
Okay, sorry. I heard something else. I'm Ted Wheeler. I'm the mayor of the city of Portland, Oregon. We appreciate this opportunity to present today. Thank you.
I'll go. Hi, everybody. My name is Vincus Maps. I'm one of the new members of Portland City Council.
Good morning, Commissioner Joanne Hardesty.
Morning, Commissioner Dan Ryan.
Good morning, Commissioner Carmen Rubio.
Great. Thank you. Is anyone else want to introduce themselves this morning? All right. If not, thank you. And if you have a brief introductory remark as to the budget, we would like to hear those now.
Yeah.
Then we'll ask questions and discuss the budget with you.
All right. Thank you. And I'm going to turn off my video while I read, just because I have unreliable bandwidth. Good morning, Chair. Thank you again. I'm pleased to join the TSCC Board and Staff this morning with my colleagues. The City Council approved the fiscal year 202122 budget in mid-May. But we actually began working as a council on the development of our shared priorities approximately five or six months ago as our newest members joined in early January. I'll briefly highlight the three priority areas where the approved budget furthers either policy direction or resources. Our first shared priority as a council is addressing houselessness. The approved budget continues and enhances funded houseless services in conjunction with our partners at the Joint Office of Homeless Services. The agreement's fully funded for the next year and resources have been added to continue the citywide access to hygiene and sanitation stations for people who are living outdoors, to also increase support for unsheltered transgendered community members, to continue promising alternative shelter models and increasing and improving shelter facilities through one-time shelter capital funding efforts. The council also shares a priority commitment to improve community safety. The approved budget real allocates internal resources and staff positions in support of our new community safety transitions program in the Office of Management and Finance. We recently filled the director position and are building internal capacity to work on broad categories for supporting systems change, operational change, and identifying new strategies for community safety response. The transition director will help implement the immediate gun violence plan as adopted by the City Council in April, partnering with community-based organizations and our own Office of Violence Prevention. The approved budget also provides guidance for program evaluation for our programs, providing unarmed response to calls for services where a police officer is not required to respond and funds the continuation of the Portland Street Response Pilot Program. The council's third shared priority is around economic recovery, something near and dear to all of our hearts. The approved budget makes strategic investments in support of small businesses throughout the entirety of the city. This includes resources to support the Ankeny Food Cart Project, the Portland Film Office, our Minority Business Chambers, our inclusive business resource network, small business repair grants, and streamline permitting at the Bureau of Development Services to advance this shared goal. In addition, resources are carved out to create space to support new and emerging small businesses, especially those owned by Black Indigenous and people of color owners, which we as a council collectively agree is the key to a successful and equitable recovery. Finally, the approved budget considers equity investments in each of these priority areas and provides resources to continue the efforts that are already currently underway. To be specific, the budget continues and increases the pool of resources allocated for a community-directed budgeting project led by Reimagine Oregon, a fund which was established last year with money reallocated from the Portland Police Bureau. In part, the approved budget adds equity-focused positions in bureaus, supports our employee affinity groups with resources for training and other actions, and it directs our Human Resources Director to improve our recruitment, retention, and promotion of Black employees.
Great. Thank you very much. Before we start our questions, I was just going to ask Craig, do you know if anyone signed publicly Craig to speak?
We have at least one person signed up and that person will speak at the end of the questions.
Great. Thank you. With that, we will start our questions. And I have the first one. There is no way of discounting the difficulties we've all experienced in this past year. And the city of Portland has been through quite a bit. What have you learned from all that has happened? And have there been any lessons that you've learned that could lead to changes in how you are doing business? And we've noticed noted specifically that there have been some issues and difficulties in the development and permitting office. And how will that office change?
Very good. I'll jump in first and then I'll turn it over to Commissioner Ryan, Commissioner Ryan for the second part of that. We've obviously, over the course of the last year plus witnessed an incredible social justice movement around the nation as well as right here in Portland, Black Lives Matter, and a strong push for meaningful change. And the council has risen to that occasion. We learned how to work remotely and remote work has highlighted, I think, both challenges as well as opportunities for increasing accessibility. For example, many people who otherwise could not attend city council meetings or come downtown to actually meet in the chamber can now participate remotely. The pandemic tested many of our city's emergency response mechanisms, which has better prepared us for potential emergency situations, including natural disasters. The challenges we faced have pushed us to focus on the city's core services and our vital programs and to do a much better job of centering equity, diversity, and inclusion in all of the work that we do. I've long known that Portlanders are resilient, they're dedicated, they're passionate, but this past year has truly proven that fact beyond any doubt. All of these lessons are shaping how we do business and they're guiding us to do a better job of serving our constituents. Our guiding principles are the city's core values, which council approved last year. Those values are anti-racism, equity, transparency, communication, collaboration, and fiscal responsibility. Those values were specifically put into action in this budget cycle. In navigating and preparing for the lasting impacts of the pandemic, all bureaus, with the exception of the Joint Office of Homeless Services, identified key programs in need of protection and reduced or eliminated programs and services that don't actively serve our community. This budget is focused on supporting the city's functions that support our shared council values. These values are pertinent to the challenges of permitting, as well as you mentioned, Chair. We're actively working to improve communications and collaborations among bureaus involved in those processes to streamline the system. And so I'd ask Commissioner Ryan, the Commissioner in charge of the Bureau of Development Services, to speak more in depth on those efforts. Commissioner Ryan?
Sure. Good morning and thank you, Mayor. And thank you, Chair Behringer and committee members. When the Bureau of Development Services, BDS, is the face, while it's the face of the permitting bureau in Portland, development review and permitting are not one office's responsibility. As you know, there are seven bureaus involved in the development review. Earlier this year, I launched a permit improvement task force with the support of all my colleagues on the council, with directors and staff from the development review bureaus with the goal of decreasing turnaround times, improving efficiency for our permits, and the entire permitting process. The task force is currently building out a work plan for its first objective, which is to improve the quality of submittals. It's a two-way street. This work is in addition to the improvements BDS has already made over the last year, including software upgrades, switching from paper to digital plan review, automating inspection assignments, launching the mobile inspector app, performing remote video inspections, and creating virtual 15-minute appointments for customers to ask city subject matter experts questions about projects and properties. Much of this work was started pre-pandemic, but definitely had to accelerate with the closing of the permit center. Like everyone else, BDS is assessing which new ways of working will continue in the future.
Excellent. We look forward to following the progress on your efforts.
Thank you so much. It is an all-in effort. I really want to appreciate all of my colleagues on the council.
Right. I have the next question. Thinking a little bit differently now, what about looking outward? What new responsibilities arose from the pandemic and how did you pay for them? What services emerged in the pandemic that the public has come to rely on and will need to continue? And how will they be funded after the federal money goes away?
The city acted quickly following COVID-19's arrival in our state. We responded by shifting our financial outlook and approach to budgeting. We focused on cost containment strategies. We asked bureaus to partner with us to address the dramatic anticipated decline in resources. City bureaus, city staff, and our partners have played vital roles in helping the city to manage this crisis. Many employees have foregone pay increases and bureaus have offered budget reductions that minimize impacts to service levels. Strong, indisciplined financial management has allowed us to weather the shock of reduced resources. Our fiscal responsibility enabled us to allocate the vast majority of our federal resources towards the most vulnerable Portlanders and to respond in turn to urgent community needs. The pandemic, of course, has magnified the needs of the most vulnerable in our community. We are very fortunate to have a handful of new and increased revenue sources coming online soon. These revenue sources ensure that we can strategically sustain enhanced service levels after deploying significant federal resources. One clear impact of the pandemic is the increased needs of houseless Portlanders. We will continue to use federal resources to invest heavily in addressing and preventing houselessness during the remainder of the crisis. And we're fortunate that the Joint Office of Homeless Services will receive funding from the voter-approved here-together ballot measure to continue the greatly enhanced level of funding for critical houseless services. The pandemic has exasperated mental and physical health needs. And while the county is ultimately responsible for providing health services, the city has a role to play here too, particularly in the prevalence and availability of open space and parks programming. As you noted in one of your later questions to follow, the city is accelerating the parks' local option levy funding in order to provide critical summer recreational opportunities and programming. In addition, we're pursuing new and, I believe, innovative approaches to deliver services in key areas that will provide better service in a cost-effective way. This includes rethinking our community safety system and providing more effective and efficient customer service through our new 311 system.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I ask a follow-up to that?
Sure.
There, the last sentence you shared was new three one-to-one system. Can you just touch on that briefly?
Yeah, sure. There are currently, well, we're in the process of building up the program, but prior to the establishment of the funding for 311, there were something like 278 different customer service phone lines at the city of Portland coming into 26 different bureaus. A thorough investigation concluded that many of those lines were going to voicemails that were in fact not staffed and were never answered. Portland is approximately 20 years behind other jurisdictions nationally that have a single customer service number 311. It's not just about ease for the public to call in on an easily remembered customer service line, and then they are triaged through city employees. But it also gives the city a unified platform to understand what the needs and interests are of our constituents, and it tracks the follow-through. In other words, if somebody calls the city and asks for X, we'll know who, when, and what was provided in response to that constituent request.
Wonderful. Thank you.
In the mayor's budget message, and then again this morning, in your introduction, Mr. Mayor, you identified economic recovery as one of your shared council priorities. Damage to reputation is a really tough thing. It's it's hard to stay optimistic about economic recovery when one of our own local television stations is running a series called Is Portland Over? We hear about vacant office space, permanently closed restaurants, still increasing home prices, arts venues shuttered, and the tents and the garbage, and a city that's been maligned in the national print and television media. After this tumultuous year, what is the city doing specifically, near term and long term, to restore Portland's reputation? I know you spoke about some programs, but damage to reputation is is sometimes a whole category apart from the programs that you're running. What what are you doing to restore our reputation as a vibrant community for business and investment, for affordable and safe neighborhoods, and for diversity and inclusion?
Yeah, thank you. Almost every big city in the country is facing exactly the same problem. Probably every major media market has done a story in their community is fill-in-the-blank city dead, or is fill-in-the-blank city dying. I call it misery porn. It sells, people watch it, and unfortunately, too many people believe it. The fact of the matter is Portland is not special in that regard. We're facing a lot of the same situations. But what is special is how we're going to address these issues and setbacks that you rightfully mentioned. Collaboration with businesses, with neighborhood associations, and just individual folk in the neighborhoods who are really concerned and really want to see Portland's image restored. We are coming together. We need to come together and people need to get involved, and they are. Our action tables, which bring together community members and stakeholders, are focused very specifically and narrowly on the issues you just raised. We're asking difficult questions. We're doing the hard work required to ensure that as our city comes back, it does so strongly. We're opening in a way that supports businesses that have had to close, as well as frankly, new businesses that are on the line and waiting and eager to open. Improving permitting, as Commissioner Ryan mentioned previously, investing in our neighborhood business districts as we are doing through this budget, and cleaning up our city will help drive this return in new growth within the community and ultimately visitors from around the world. We're already seeing hotel vacancy rates decline precipitously over where they were at the height of the pandemic. We also know that the community wants the city to be cleaned up, and we provided the funds to kickstart those efforts. In April, we launched our Clean and Green Project, which responds to our city's growing litter problem by funding volunteer efforts across the city to assist in the cleanup efforts. And people have been very eager to participate in that. On June 25th and 26th of this month, SOLV will host two Pick It Up Portland events, and we hope to see everybody there, all be there. In addition to the cleanup efforts, we're also addressing the need to increase sanitation staff, as well as increase our outreach to homeless Portlanders. Homelessness, of course, is a critical issue. It is one of the council's top priorities, as I indicated earlier, but we need to respond to it in a humane manner. This budget commits specifically over $11 million to homeless services, to shelter development, to hygiene stations, to job creation, to litter collection at the camps. Our Impact Reduction Team offers resources to Portlanders experiencing homelessness or housing insecurity, including trash removal, hygiene access, resource referral, and job training opportunities. The Shelter to Housing Continuum provides us with more flexible options to ensure houseless Portlanders have safe spaces to sleep and to live. Our eviction moratorium, combined with rental assistance and other supportive programs, helped keep people in their homes throughout the pandemic. The current demand for housing and with the push to clean up and reopen our city, I think it demonstrates that people still want to move here and they still want to live here, despite the premature prognostications of the end of Portland. As for public safety, we've completed 13 out of 19 points of reform in my policy reform action plan. The other six points are in progress. These actions focus on reinvestments in communities of color, Community Red-led review and reform of patrolling services, pilots like the Portland Street Response, responding to our gun violence crisis, and many, many more, including proactive and community-based work. We're all part of this, working hard to restore Portland's reputation. Each of my colleagues on the Portland City Council has championed, launched, and supported initiatives that I think directly support and enhance our recovery. That includes everything from supporting businesses to reactivating our community, to cleaning up our community, to addressing some of the issues around livability and safety and homelessness that you issued earlier. But now I'm going to go off script and add one more item. And that is, if you want to improve your reputation, I should say, if one wants to improve one's reputation, the first thing that needs to happen is you need to stop trashing yourself in public. And I don't know why it is, but there seems to be a almost strong interest in not recognizing that we are improving. And I mean, I don't know if any of you on the commission have tried to go to a restaurant without a reservation of late in Portland, including in the downtown core. You can't get one. If you were in downtown last weekend, you saw that there were people everywhere. If you went to one of our parks last week when it was sunny out, they were packed. If you have gone to an open house for a house in the city of Portland, you know that there are long lines of people waiting to get in. Portland is not done. Portland has gone through an extremely challenging year. And what I see at the end of the day is a city that's coming together to not only recover and restore the reputation, but change the city, and in many ways for the better, making sure that income disparities are addressed, that shared economic prosperity is really truly shared, that our neighborhoods get as much attention as other parts of the downtown core, to make sure that equity and diversity means something other than a talking point. I feel really good about Portland's future. And I'm sorry that we've had to go through such a rough year, along with other cities in the United States, but those are the cards we were dealt. And I'm really proud of this council. We held together. So far, we've been, we've had some differences around the edges, but we support. So far, we've been, you know, we've had some differences around the edges, but we support the same values. We've supported this budget collectively. And I think the city is in a great position for recovery. And I think while while we got the lion's share of the crap in the national press, because frankly, the former president put us in that spotlight, I think we're going to be the comeback kid. That's my prediction.
I appreciate your your optimism. And I also know that many of the programs you described in your introduction are delivered through Prosper Portland, and we will be meeting with them tomorrow, and I will be asking them also what they are doing to restore Portland's reputation. So thank you for your thoughtful answer.
You bet. Thank you.
Our next question has to do with evaluation. And I'm one of those folks that is always looking for data in the media and other places. And we're beginning to see, as the mayor indicates, with some of these new programs, we're beginning to hear about things like Adopt a Block and SOLV and all kind, all manner of efforts to clean the streets and to help address our problems. We're particularly interested as a as a kind of a longitudinal group that tracks things over time in measuring. And so my question has to do with how do you or what is your plan for measuring the success of the city's homeless shelter and trash removal programs? And how confident are you that you will meet the community's expectation of fewer homeless camps?
The numbers, we do use metrics, and the numbers are trending in the right direction. We're moving an historic amount of litter from the city, and we have significantly expanded cleanup efforts in motion. And in fact, we've broken records every month so far this year. In March alone, we picked up almost 820,000 pounds of litter, 820,000 pounds of litter from our public right of ways. That's 410 tons and 60 tons more than we picked up just last December. So there there is a clear overlay here between the lack of people anywhere during the pandemic and the increase in in that litter. The Homeless and Urban Camping Impact Reduction Program is now operating at pre-COVID levels. They were established, or excuse me, they have established very specific objective measurements that are clearly available on their website to determine which sites need attention. Those are sites that have a public health or a public safety or an environmental impact, or all three. These are campsites that that not only pose a threat to the individuals who are living there, who often need additional support and help, but they also create a potential threat to the community at large. Given this good work and the investments in this budget, I'm very confident that we're on our way towards meeting the community's expectations. There is a clear shared value in Portland around houselessness, which is we don't want people to have to live on the streets. And it's a very complex issue, and it overlays with with mental health issues, substance abuse issues, domestic violence abuse issues, youth trauma and neglect, and on and on and on. And we're doing everything we can to broaden our partnerships, to work with people who can help, you know, not only alongside shelter or housing that's provided, but the support services that are included. The voters of this city overwhelmingly approve the Here Together ballot initiative, which provides about $100 billion a year or more in our community towards those services, substance abuse and mental health. So I'm not going to declare victory anytime soon on this issue. It is the thorniest social issue of our time in this community. It will take years, I believe, to ultimately solve it, because there's a lot of support infrastructure that needs to be put into place. But we are moving with a sense of urgency, we are moving with diligence, and we are moving with compassion. And so I'm very optimistic that in three, four, five, six years, I don't know the timeline, but at some point in the future, we will look back and say, this is a community we came together, we put in the systems we needed to put in place, we built the infrastructure that we needed to build, and we supported funding for the kinds of programs where the gaps exist around mental health, substance abuse, job training, and other areas, and we got it done.
That's very encouraging. And one of the things that we haven't really touched on, and you you, in your introductory remarks, you indicated that sanitation was one of those things that would be fully funded in this budget, you know, to the extent the city's role, what, you know, that this in the city's role. In my neighborhood, that's an issue because we do have camps. And could you talk a little bit more about what the city is doing about sanitation for homeless camps?
Yeah, well, first of all, you know, in in areas where there are, as you know, during COVID, the CDC put forth guidance that basically, you know, it it led to effectively a hands-off approach to those who are living out of doors. But what we did do was put, I think it was 78, I can be off a little bit, but I think it was 78 sanitation stations throughout the city. So that included porta potties and hand washing stations and the like in various areas of the city that were identified as being likely high-use locations for those services. In addition, the work this council has done around the better housing by design and the work that's being done around expanding alternative campsites, those those will be sites that will be sanctioned, meaning they will have access to hygiene. So we're thinking about it alongside the infrastructure of the camps that we currently have. And I also want to acknowledge that some of our business partners have been really helpful in this. You know, Starbucks seems to get a lot of grief from the self-described anarchists who periodically like to break stuff. But let's give them credit where credit is due. Starbucks also opened their bathrooms throughout the city, through their network, to allow anybody to use them, whether or not they were making a purchase. And other businesses followed suit. And so I really want to applaud our private sector partners who've also helped us with that problem. It's it's a, oh, and the Parks Bureau, I forgot to mention that Commissioner Rubio probably has more on this. But we've we've invested more than we've ever invested to get the Parks bathrooms up and operating and functional. And I think, I could be wrong, somebody will correct me. I think we also put in supported funding for the attendance in Pioneer Square. I think we extended the hours, but don't quote me on that. I remember there was a budget asked last year that that ultimately we did support that I think may have been helpful in that regard. So we clearly see it as an issue. And again, the more people you have living in unsanctioned camps outside without access to hygiene, the bigger the problem. So obviously, if we can get people to come into sanctioned camps or to our shelters, or better yet, into a more stable housing situation, that issue ameliorates.
Thank you very much.
And sorry, I don't know if everyone can see, but Commissioner Maps and Commissioner Hardisty were also going to weigh in.
Sure. If I could just jump in quickly, Mark, number one, thank you for that question like you. I've been thinking hard about the metrics that I should pay attention to as the city raffles with the problem of houselessness and litter. Here are a couple of metrics that I am following closely, and they're very intuitive. You know, first, I want to see a reduction in the absolute number of people who sleep on our streets every night from today to the end of this budget year. On the trash side, I'll be tracking the number of tons of trash that we remove from the streets over this next year. And I'll also be tracking the number of complaints that we receive from the public around trash. I think part of your question was, how optimistic are am I about Portlanders being satisfied with our progress on these issues over the course of the next fiscal year? And actually, I'm fairly confident in our trash pickup program. We put a lot of resources out there, the community is really rallying around this. I think that by the time we get to July 1, 2022, Portland is going to see a remarkable reduction in the amount of illegal dumping that we see around the city. So I'm excited to to track that, and I'll do everything I can to keep us on course with that. On the issue of houselessness, I expect us to make significant progress on houselessness over the next year. But on July 1, 2022, do I expect Portlanders to say that we have solved our houseless problem? No, I don't, and nor should that outcome happen. You know, I know that Portlanders are deeply kind and humane, and as long as there's one Portlander sleeping on the streets, that's going to be too many. But I do have an awful lot of faith in the leadership that Commissioner Ryan has shown around developing a new strategy for housing people in a humane way. And thanks to our intergovernmental partners over the next decade or so, the city of Portland and the Portland metro area is going to make an enormous investment in getting people off the streets. I think over time, as in the next decade or so, I think that we're really going to change the houseless story here in the Rose City. But it's going to take time. But I do expect substantial progress as soon as 371 days from now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, thank you, Chairperson and committee members. I am normally the optimist. Today, I am not the optimist in in this conversation. And let me tell you why. As you may know, as of July 1, the eviction moratorium will expire. And without some direct action, either by the state, the county, or maybe the city, we can anticipate up to 10,000 more houseless people in our community. With everything that we're doing, whether it's sanctioned camps or giving people minimum supports for camps, the reality is that it won't look any different on our street a year or two from now. We cannot build housing fast enough that people can afford to live there. The Housing Bureau last, a couple of weeks ago, presented a report that showed that African Americans, there's no zip code in the city of Portland that African Americans can live in without being cost burdened. The problem is it costs too much to live in a city of Portland. That problem's not going to go away at the end of the pandemic. And in fact, it will be exacerbated, as we're seeing now, where people are actually paying more than someone is asking for housing prices. This is not an easy problem, and we, and I really appreciate the commitment that Commissioner Ryan is making to really being very thoughtful about how we continue to address this issue. But I don't want anybody to walk out of here and think that somehow, a year from now, two years from now, five years from now, that there will not be people sleeping on the street in the city of Portland. Let me also say, even with sanctioned camps, there will be people camping in other places in the city of Portland. We can't make people or mandate people sleep in certain places if we have a city that is unaffordable for working people and very low-income people. And so there's a lot more work to be done. We have an IGA to negotiate with the county, because I'm not sure that the joint office is actually serving us well. And some of my colleagues feel the same way. So it's not going to be easy, but I also don't want you to leave with this rosy picture of it's just going to, everything's going to be wonderful. It's not, not by a long shot.
Thank you.
So I have the next question, and thank you for the tee up, Commissioner Hardisty. So switching now to speaking more directly about the Joint Office, are there specific results that the city is expecting to see in the next year for the the investment that the city makes? And has the Joint Office reconciled to the council's satisfaction the tension inherent between providing, you know, short-term emergency shelter beds and longer-term, you know, solutions around housing affordability and other supports that make ongoing housing possible?
As of the approved budget, the city's contributing nearly $43 million to the Joint Office. This may be enhanced through the provision of additional ARP dollars this summer, that's still in play. This is not an either-or issue from the perspective of the council. It is a both and. We need both emergency shelter beds and emergency responses, and we need affordable housing. The solution to homelessness ultimately is housing, but that is a long-term solution. We need to provide safe alternatives to housing for people who are still, and in fact, at this very moment, living outside. And in my opinion, and in the opinion of some of my colleagues, having people living in the conditions that they're currently living in outside with some of the health and mental health issues that they live with is substandard, it is dangerous, and I believe ultimately it is inhumane. I support longer-term solutions around housing, substance abuse, and mental health. That said, I don't believe that it is fair for us to tell people currently living on the streets to wait four or five or six years for that housing and those services to come online. As our annual death toll demonstrates, a lot of people don't have that much time. And so it is very unpopular in some circles to be trying to intervene now at the street level. But ultimately, I believe that this response is that this council has supported through this budget process are the most effective and the most humane in addressing our urgent needs now. And there's been some reference to the work that Commissioner Ryan and his staff are doing around alternative campsites. We've proven they work. You know, we stood up three of them at the beginning of the pandemic, and I happened to drive by one in the central east side just yesterday. And it it looks as effective and humane and hygienic. I mean, it's maybe not exactly the right word, but I'm struggling for the right word, as it did the day it was open. And we've just opened a new one up in St. John, and there have been others that we've done, like the Kent Women's Village in partnership with the community that have been very supportive in partnership with the private sector, like the Navigation Center in the Pearl District, that have been highly effective. The work that we've done to enhance our shelters in southeast Portland to provide additional wraparound services have been highly effective. So, you know, it it it's not either or, and I think frankly, the division between the city and the county may be one of degree rather than substance. That's just my perspective. I know Commissioner Ryan would would like to speak on this subject as well.
Sure. Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, James, for this question. Yeah, over the past six months, my staff and I have had many, many meetings with the chair and her staff to discuss the ways in which we can coordinate these efforts. At many points, we've experienced tension. That's, I think, healthy. I call it healthy tension, and there will be more. This is a tough issue. And through sustained dialogue, we made significant progress in establishing a shared vision and really getting clear about role clarity. At present, I'm greatly appreciative of the work the Joint Office does to balance the need to create supportive housing services while also prioritizing a short-term response due to this crisis that we're in. In the next fiscal year, my hope is that the Joint Office will make good on its commitment to get 1,300 houseless people off the streets. And I'm very grateful that while also supporting our city's effort to get these emergency safe rest restorative villages, six of them established. So I really see that the dialogue between the two entities is very healthy at the moment.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioner Ryan. Commissioner, I wondered, you know, we've heard kind of about, I think, over at least my time on the commission, we've heard a lot about the self-governing, you know, organized camps specifically. And it seems like, you know, the city was really effective at deploying several of those during the pandemic. Historically, we've heard, you know, that there are, you know, more potential sites around the city that face real challenges in part because of permitting. But, you know, I think there's a lot of, of course, social aspects around it as well. And I wondered if you had any thoughts, Commissioner, about, you know, the future kind of post, you know, the emergency pandemic response about the expansion of the, you know, organized camps to to a greater degree. to a greater degree, especially with, you know, partners like churches and other entities that might be willing to do it and having a hard time kind of navigating the city's rules around it.
Yeah, James, very timely. As you know, in late April, this council was unified in our code work around the work with going from shelter to housing. And now we get to implement that vision. And I can say that the key word, I think, is a shared managed village. So there's, it's really important to build resilience and empower those residents in the villages. And at the same time, provide some baseline services, just humane baseline services such as sanitation with and hygiene. And hygiene goes both to keep the body clean, but also the clothes. And then I think the big one is going to be working in partnership with the county to deliver case management to each of the villages. So we can get to know these people, the residents by name. And we can see, is it a mental health? Is it substance abuse? Often it's both. Is it cognitive, which is different? So really just meet the residents where they are and start to have hope that we can build the resilience. So when one moves into assisted housing that's subsidized. They have the resilience to remain there and continue to move forward in life. It's often very difficult for someone to go with dual or triple diagnosis on the streets to permanent housing. And I know I've had that lived experience with my own brother who perished on the streets. So I think we're adapting, and that's what's important. And I like that the mayor mentioned this is an and strategy. The rescue dollars give us an opportunity like never before to build this infrastructure. And so the city with its services can build that infrastructure so that we have some common services for all of our residents. And this ordinance will be coming to the city council in a couple of weeks.
Great. Thanks. We'll be very interested in seeing how that goes.
You're welcome, James. Thanks.
Okay, changing topics a little bit, moving on to the community safety highlight of the budget. Among the council's top priorities for this budget is community safety. But there appears to be a divide between community expectations and what is seen on the street. It's obviously going to take time to get the Portland Street Response up and running. And we're certainly not here today to resolve any of those policy questions before the council about the Street Response Team. We're here to represent citizens who sincerely want to know what to do in the meantime. Because there are certainly no pause when a community safety problem arises on your street or in your neighborhood. So while the council sorts all of this out, what are the alternatives for a community member who sees something that needs a non-police response, non-criminal activity? And what is in next year's budget to support that community member? What does a community member do in this situation, and how is this being communicated to the public?
First, I would say that any community member that sees something that does not require a police response should think about whether or not what they're seeing requires an emergency response. We find that people call nine-one-one frequently for non-emergency situations, for non-life-threatening situations. Folks in the public should call the Emergency Communications Non-Emergency Line, which is five zero three eight two three 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 three. Community members seeking connections to social services may call text or email two-one-one, which is a county-operated service for referral and information. All commissioners are very excited about the potential with Portland Street Response and are committed to expanding this program beyond the pilot. Right now, we're ensuring that we have the right model, one that works. Success requires us to be methodical and ensure that the program's services are aligned with the county's mental health system and our private partners. Outside of the Portland Street Response, the council is actively making preparations and investments needed to meet community expectations and needs related to safety in a sustainable way. The new budget specifically will support Portlanders by building a foundation for the new police oversight board. Increasing funding for our Office of Violence Prevention. And that includes funding for, in addition, funding for community-based partners. Ensuring adequate patrol officer numbers while also tripling the number of unarmed officers who are trained to respond to lower acuity events. That also frees our armed police officers to respond to higher acuity events. And I know Commissioner Hardisty has some thoughts on this as well, Commissioner.
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioner Mabst, did you need to weigh in before I spoke? No? Okay. In two thousand eighteen, you were going in published an article showing that fifty percent of arrests made by Portland Police Bureau in two thousand seventeen were of a person experiencing houselessness despite being less than three percent of the city's population. In two thousand nineteen, when I took office, I immediately began exploring how to bring an alternative first response to the city. Which resulted in council including five hundred thousand dollars and one-time funds for a pilot program in the fiscal year two thousand nineteen, twenty adopted budget. Over the next several months, my office in partnership with the mayor's office would lead a stakeholder group growing to more than forty individuals from the city, the county, local advocacy groups, and peers. The stakeholder group was a working group broken up into five teams focused on community engagement. Call transitioning, internal logistics, external logistics, systems mapping, and alignment. The community engagement work group worked to ensure that the final proposal would uplift the voices of the houseless community. They did this in several ways. They helped me set up listening sessions with houseless individuals. Members of Street Roots, Sisters of the Road, Right to Survive, Street Books. The Portland State University Homeless Research and Action Collaborative. The Mapping Action Collaborative, Yellow Brick Road. My office and Representative Valicia Guyer Kenny's office interviewed over one hundred and eighty-four unhoused people and the community to get their vision for an alternative first responder model. This engagement accumulated in a thirty-three-page report entitled Believe Our Stories and Listen. This outreach was instrumental in the creation of the initial pilot vision. My staff engaged with the Portland Police Bureau as well, going out to each of the three precincts to engage with officers to help better understand their participation, their perspectives, and participated in ride-alongs. In November of two thousand nineteen, the stakeholder group presented their final recommendations to council to pilot Portland Street Response and Portland Fire and Rescue, and it was approved unanimously. Now that the pilot was launched, the program has contracted with the Portland State University Homeless Research and Action Collaborative for ongoing program evaluation while the pilot is running. This approach ensures transparency to the community, but it's also a model that will help the pilot be successful in real time. Over the course of the next year, the world would change radically. The murder of George Floyd became a catalyst for social reckoning, and Portlanders took to the streets by the thousands. Council offices received tens of thousands of contacts, an unprecedented number, calling for changes to policing from reform to outright abolition. And council ultimately divested fifteen million from the bureau and reallocated four point eight million ongoing for Portland Street Response to expand the pilot program. It is my belief that although there are many other achievements in the fiscal two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two budget. Council has walked back from a commitment the city of Portland made to the community by not continuing the planned expansion of Portland Street Response Pilot. The community has been vocal about the need for an alternative response and has participated in the creation of this program every step of the way. Portland Street Response is the only true first response alternative this budget has to offer. Without this expansion, it is my belief that the assertion by T S C C that a divide between community expectations and the services the city plans to provide is adequate and right on the money. Thank you.
Thank you.
And if I could jump in here real quick, Harmony, thank you. Thank you so much for that question. Amongst my other responsibilities, I'm the commissioner in charge of Boeck, which means that one of my day-to-day jobs is to build systems that connect Portlanders with the services they need. And I want to let Portlanders know, you know, if you have an emergency that requires a cop, a fire engine, an ambulance, you know, you should call nine-one-one. That's what we're here for. But we also know that probably half of the time calls, when people call nine-one-one, they're actually looking for some alternative services that doesn't kind of fall into one of those buckets. And the good news is that Portland has and is expanding services that don't fall into those kind of traditional emergency response things. So as Commissioner Hardisty mentioned, of course, we already have Portland Street Response out working in Lentz. I really appreciate her leadership there, and I think everyone on council looks forward to expanding Portland Street Response throughout the entire city. There's also good news. We have a project respond, which is actually operated by the county. But offers many of the same services that you would expect from Portland Street Response. You can get a project response team on the scene to basically deal with a mental health issue by calling five oh three nine eight eight four eight eight eight. That's five oh three nine eight eight four eight eight eight. Another thing which I would also add is that if you find yourself in need of help, but it's not necessarily an emergency situation. We really want to start to encourage people to call three-one-one. These are trained service operators at the city who will help, essentially help you figure out what city services you're looking for and how to connect with them. I think if you're looking long-term in terms of some of the major changes that we'll see to our emergency response system here in Portland. One of the things we want to do is to increasingly train folks to not call nine-one-one for non-emergency issues, but rather call three-one-one. I'll tell you, my folks over at nine-one-one navigate about a million calls a year. We estimate that probably about three hundred thousand of those would more appropriately be served by the three-one-one number. We're hoping that this budget moves us in the direction to kind of both build up three-one-one and to educate people about the services offered over at three-one-one. Not only will that be better public service to folks who need help with non-emergency issues by taking like about a third of the burden away from our immediate first responder tax, our nine-one-one operators and our police and our fire and our ambulance services, we can actually begin to provide much better and quicker direct response. So those are some of the things that I hope people think about as they think about who to call when you need some help. Thank you.
Thank you. Just misinformation that my colleague shared. Project Response will only show up after police officers have cleared a scene. In many cases, people suffering from mental health issues are not happy to see someone in uniform or with a weapon are yelling orders at them. And so it is not like Portland Street Response. It is a radically different approach that shows up in ten percent of the cases where people need support. So it is not a model that I'd like to expand or do anything else with, maybe do away with. But I would certainly not recommend that for someone who's in a mental health crisis.
I appreciate Commissioner Hardisty's clarification there. That's not my understanding of the situation, but I'll tell you what I'll do. I'll ask my staff to follow up and get the information to your committee. Thank you, everyone, for this discussion.
Yeah, thank you so much for all of this information. I think the conversation between Commissioner Mabst and Commissioner Hardisty. I think highlights for Portlanders too, the confusion around who we call and when do we call which number. So I am hopeful, and maybe this is a follow-up. How is this information besides certainly to us personally asking in the commission and anyone watching today's meeting? Going to, how are you going to communicate that? How are we going to find these resources beyond some deep dives into websites and things like that?
That's really a great question, and Tom Reinhardt was on the phone earlier, and he could tell you about the communication strategy that we're planning to use as we roll out that information line. Because you're absolutely right. If the information line and our updated website really work in partnership with each other because just like the mayor said about the information lines, we had hundreds of information lines. So if you didn't know exactly who you needed to talk to, it's easy to get lost in a city's system. And so there will be a communication strategy that will be broadly broadly utilized by the city to make sure that people know what the appropriate numbers are. And that will also be true for our new website that, if you've noticed, it's about to launch, I believe, early July.
Thank you.
Well, this next question, I think we've covered a number of the aspects of. I don't know, Mayor, if you want to give kind of an abbreviated response about it, but I mean, basically, our question is, and as I mentioned, you've already, through several of the answers, discussed different parts of it. But there has been, I think, as the previous answer has illustrated, discussion in our community and nationwide, I think, about the appropriate use of police officers and when it's appropriate for what types of situations armed officers should be showing up for as opposed to, you know, mediators, park rangers. You know, Portland Street Response, you know, there, I know that the city has been investigating recently using P-Bot employees to look at traffic violations. We're a little bit wondering about how the council is weighing these alternatives and what tangible results we've seen so far.
Yeah, well, first of all, I want to clarify that some of these actions are not specifically alternatives to police. That's important to make that clarification. We're not using park rangers or P-Bot employees or others instead of police. Rather, we're using all available resources that we have to accomplish the goal of keeping the community safe. So I'm thinking about community safety in a broader sense here. Crises, including the current gun violence crisis, do require a full city response. And so I think we've already tread on some of this territory, you know, over, you've been around and you know, I've expanded our Park Ranger program, not for the purpose of policing, but serving basically as community ambassadors and problem-solving. Reducing any potential conflicts before it becomes an issue that might be of concern to the police. Similarly, the tripling of the size of the Public Safety Officer Program, these are unarmed police employees. Again, the focus there is trying to do non-emergency work so that it doesn't become emergency-related work. The Street Response Pilot is yet another example. And the work that we do with community partners around de-escalation for people in crisis again. That is to de-escalate crises before they get to that point. And I know Commissioner Rubio wanted to talk a little bit about the parks programs, the Ranger Program.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, James, for the question. As Parks Commissioner, yeah, I'd like to speak a little bit to this. Recent investment in the Parks Ranger Program does not fundamentally change the Ranger Program. Rangers will still have the same job and the same mandate, and that includes, as the mayor said, making parks a positive place to be. Educating visitors when they violate park rules and referring crimes and threats to Portland Police. The results here mean literally more Rangers in more parks and making it more positive connections than before. And as elected, we consider different options to address community safety, and park rangers have a role in a community safety continuum of services. And just for background, in previous years, it's not uncommon that the number of park rangers would seasonally increase during the summer months. So this is not a new practice for the bureau. And just finally, park rangers respond to calls related to violations of City Code Title Twenty. The code related to park rule violations, and this encompasses the code related to park rule violations, and this encompasses a variety of livability issues, but including but not limited to alcohol, drugs, fireworks, disturbances, permit issues, and animal problems, just to name a few.
Thank you.
And I think Commissioner Hardesty may have had something to say about P-Bot.
I'm sorry, was there a question about P-Bot?
I just didn't know if you wanted to chime in on the P-Bot employees for traffic control.
Oh, yes. Well, I think the only thing I would say is that there was a bill in Salem that would have allowed P-Bot employees to be able to provide citations for traffic violations, and that bill died. And we will try again next session, like we did last session and the session before that, because we really don't think that we need an armed individual to provide that kind of public service. So, well, just like the bill that did pass, we did that one three legislative terms too before we got it through. So we'll keep working on that one and looking for other alternatives.
Thank you.
I have another question that is not unique to the city of Portland. But one of the things the commission does is, year after year, we try to go back and look at the problems that were discussed previously. And for the six years that I've been on the commission, vacancies in the police bureau have come up. I know that the council has directed the police bureau to enhance transparency around their staffing and personnel expenditures, and we do appreciate that. But each year, we've talked about new emerging strategies, whether it's a strike team, a strike HR team, changing the compensation plan, a plan to expand geographical recruiting. But given the age of our workforce, we have officers approaching retirement that are leaving, but we also have new officers that are not staying. So what's your idea? Why is it recruitment working? Is there anything that we can do about this?
Yeah, thank you for the question. The problem, obviously, is not recruitment. And retention of police officers is very low nationwide. This unfortunately is not a new problem for our city. Portland Police Bureau was understaffed, in my opinion, before I took office. This country is at a critical point in terms of redefining what the police do and how they can most effectively serve public safety interests in our communities. It's also true that many potential officers are reassessing if the work that we're mapping out now is something they want to be a part of. And that is a fair question for them to be able to ask, as any city employee could ask. We're doing our best to retain the talent we do have. We want to retain dedicated officers who've shown that they're committed to being a valuable and trusted resource to the public. And I am working with the Portland Police Bureau on various strategies around recruitment and as well as retention. This council is engaged in the collective bargaining process. Our contract is coming up soon, and we are bargaining in good faith with our police bureau to find a reasonable balance in terms of the tools, the resources, the training, and the accountability standards in which they will operate. And I am hopeful that those negotiations will lead to an amicable and agreeable solution.
We do recognize that it is not a problem unique to the city of Portland, and the position of law enforcement as a desirable career is an open question. So I appreciate your response. Commissioner Hardesty, did you wish to?
Yes, please. You know, I appreciate what the mayor said, but the reality is, is that I don't think that there is an ideal number of police officers. The police always want more, right? They always need more, and they always justify why they need more. I think what we experienced last year was a coalescing around the question, what is the role of police in our community? If we look at the audits that have come out of the auditor's office around policing, we know that everybody in Portland doesn't experience policing the same. We know some communities are heavily targeted. We know that houses, community members are over 50% of the people arrested. And last summer, when tens of thousands of Portlanders took to the street for six-plus months, they were very clear that they want to be able to weigh in on what real community safety looks like. I am pleased that this budget actually starts the process of a truth and reconciliation process that both starts with the police internally doing their own work. Because if I listen to police talk today, they're not ready for the truth part of reconciliation, but they must be if we're going to have an open and honest community conversation. I am so thrilled that Chief Lavelle has agreed that, yes, he will and his officers will participate in that process. We have former black and brown police officers who've also agreed that they will participate in that process because they know their lived experience is different inside the police bureau than white officers experienced. In addition to that, as you know, the pandemic has uncovered that every institution we have is built on a white supremacist model. So we have training to do around identifying white supremacy and how it operates within the city of Portland, what the symbolism is that gets carried out, whether it's in logos or in get vehicles or in other locations. The reality is, is that it will be a couple of years before, I believe, the community will know what we want in community police officers and how they fit into a system of community safety. I think there's a real knee-jerk response to the rising gun violence that, oh, we'll just have more police. Well, police actually don't have an impact at all on the crime rate. Because as you know, police show up after the crime has happened and not preventing crime. We don't charge people for thinking about murder. We actually charge people because they commit murder. And so I think what you need to know is this will be a process. It will be painful. It will be slow. But my expectation, and I think most of my council would concur, is that it's not a fast process. It's going to take 18 to 24 months, and that's what we should be telling the public. We won't have all the answers today. But in addition to that, it should not be a fast process, and we should not pretend that we have a different police force today than we had last summer, because we don't. And until we have had the opportunity for that in-depth conversation and the community gets to prioritize how they want to be police, I think we will be in a state of limbo, and I am concerned about adding people into a culture that is not the culture of the future, but the culture of the past. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. I have another question. We're with good gears again and talk a little bit about the new parks local option levy. It comes online next year, and we know you're giving debt proceeds in advance of that this year. What are the first things that you're using the money for? Do you have benchmarks for the use of that funding next year? And with the pandemic ebbing, when will the parks reopen to full use? How are the investments of those levy funds changing our park experience? Our park experience, or how will they change our park experience?
Thank you for the question. Since Portland voters overwhelmingly approved the Parks Levy in November 2020, Portland Parks and Recreation has worked really hard to restore recreation programming in a COVID response manner for this summer 2021. And due to the way property tax collection works, levy funding is not available, as you referenced, until November of 2021. But the council and community didn't want to wait another summer to go by without programming in parks. So on February 17th of this year, City Council approved a supplemental budget for this current fiscal year and an inter-fund loan to fund short-term needs related to summer 2021 programming and building organizational capacity for a future service expansion. And the Bureau's budget for FY 2122 supports the aims of supplemental budget in February and for the year one of the levy. The Bureau will submit a detailed budget in early fall as part of the city's fall budget monitoring process. And as Parks and Rec has learned from public health experts over the life of the COVID-19 pandemic, outdoor programming is the safest way to restore programming and improve and protect public health. So with that knowledge, Portland Parks and Recreation designed summer programs and created employment recruitment and training programs to restore programming in summer, focusing on outdoor activities. The Parks Levy will allow the Bureau to focus resources to meet the needs of underserved communities. That's one tangible way that we will all see the difference as well. The resources advanced from the Parks Levy are helping the Bureau reduce costs as a barrier to public programs and while doing so also prioritizes equity. Portland Parks and Recreation has focused on outdoor recreation and environmental programming for children and youth, including outdoor swimming lessons, summer camps, fitness in the park, nature day camps, and tennis lessons in the park. And the COVID-19 pandemic has also made parks' role in preventing hunger during the summer break from school even more vital to the Portland community. The Bureau expects to serve over 100,000 meals to alleviate hunger in our community by continuing a critical program of distributing free meals to enjoy in parks or take home. In addition to providing meals to youth ages up to 18, Portland Parks and Recreation will host pop-up arts and music and cultural events and small-scale arts clinics at some parks across the city during free lunch and play. And lastly, the summer programming means that Portland Parks and Recreation will hire a lot of seasonal and casual staff to keep parks clean and provide public programs. And Portland Parks and Rec is expecting to hire up to 1,850 staff members this summer. And we will once again be among the largest summer youth employers in the city. So again, I just want to take the moment to express my thanks to Portland voters for their support for the Parks Levy so that we can reopen our parks and recreation system to all Portlanders in this time.
Thank you. We are avid park users in this house. You can't hear the squeals of excitement behind me as the first graders running wild.
I've got a follow-up. This is Mark. Commissioner Rubio, the work has been done to prepare the community for reopening outdoors in the summer. And I know that we're, all of us that, like Harmony and myself, and probably everybody on this call, are thrilled with that progress. But I'm mostly an inside, face-to-face user of park services. I take classes. I do projects. And I'm curious about what your thinking is for reopening in the fall, perhaps, of face-to-face.
Well, we are certainly following the guidelines and watching closely what happens statewide. And as we've been doing, and it is quite literally recalibration every moment. So we have to be prepared as a bureau to scale up, but just in case, also be prepared to scale back if the need changes. So in the scaling up part, that part is in progress. So while I can't give you an answer, certainly that would be the goal, right? But while we can't give you an answer, we're certainly planning as if we have that really wonderful opportunity to do that.
Great, thank you. We are nearly at the end of our time, and we do have a citizen who wants to make a comment. So with that, I'm going to skip my question 10, but I'm going to ask our staff to work with your staff so we can get your written response, and we'll include that in our record. Mark, do you want to do yours really quickly before we?
Certainly. I'm happy to. So we structured our questions around your three highest priorities. So we've talked a lot about economic recovery, homelessness, community safety. But we know you have a fourth high priority, which is equity. And so could you tell us what we will be talking about in this hearing next year about the equity investments you've made and how they've been paid off or how they have paid off?
Yeah, sure. Thank you. So we're acting upon the mandates of what is obviously an incredible social justice movement that we've witnessed over the course of the past year. We are, across all of our bureaus, sowing the seeds of change. That even includes in my office where I've asked Dr. Marquesha Webster to work with me as a personal advisor on issues of equity and diversity. She, of course, is the Bureau Director for our Bureau of Equity and Human Rights. Each of our bureaus has their own equity plan. The budget that you are considering signing off on today includes, as part of the directive that was put out, the guidance it required equity and diversity to be front and center in each of the program offers that was put forward. In terms of the work going forward, obviously thoughtful and deliberate change is both institutional, it's systemic, and it is cultural. And those things certainly take some time. We've had a number of conversations today about the police bureau and alternatives to policing and ways to change the recruitment, the retention, the training, the directives under which the police bureau operate, but this is true across all of our bureaus. And I think you're also going to see, as this budget reflects, more support for our employees of color and all of our affinity groups. The work that we've done around economic recovery has highlighted and put employers that are owned and operated by people of color front and center in our recovery strategies. The household support that we provided was done with a focus, an intentional focus, on equity and diversity-related issues. So bottom line is, this year has been an opportunity for us to reevaluate everything that we're doing as a city as we pursue the values that we discussed upfront, including anti-racism and equity in all aspects of our city's operations. We will continue to evaluate our progress. If anybody participates or listens to any of our city council meetings, you will know that on virtually every issue that comes before the council, whether it's a policy-related issue, whether it's a resolution looking forward in our values, whether it's a procurement or a contracting item, diversity and equity are front and center in the deliberations in this council.
Great, thank you very much. That's the end of our official questions. I'd like to leave two minutes now for the citizen Craig that you said has signed up to give us comments.
Yes, the City of Portland staff can introduce the person and log them in.
Okay, in two minutes, please, with your comments.
We have Edith Gillis on the line to testify.
Thank you.
Edith, are you able to unmute?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
About twice a year, the public is given too little time and information to analyze and advise you with too little or no influence because too much money was already spent in rushed, ill-informed votes throughout the year, in which the public and the commissioners do not have the information or time needed to make good choices. Instead, do pie chart budgeting, in which the slices of budgetary pie are sized by their importance and benefit to Portlanders surviving and thriving, and the city best fulfilling its duties to the people and its professed values and priorities. Make all funding votes throughout the year within specific pie slices and have each commissioner rank zero to five on each column for how it aligns with professed values. Clean air and water, safe housing for all, food security, local clean energy, climate justice, disasters and pandemic resilience, regenerative economy, social justice, racial justice, government policy, police transparency and accountability, safe, just transportation, communication, democracy and hope, ever stronger community with mutual respect and caring needed for livability and mental and physical health. As a part of the documents counting each vote, promptly post online for each funding and policy vote throughout the year, each commissioner's identification of how that choice fits the pie chart priorities and the grid of values or duties ranking. Priestgoers can do this. Money wasted on lots of little Dollar Tree junk and junk food would mean no money left over for rent, electricity, medicine, or certainly no money for Disneyland. Funding Zenith oil train terminal explosions and toxic fires destroying two hospitals, many neighborhoods, and businesses. The airport imports and our economy and ecosystems. the airport in Portland, and our economy and ecosystems, and killing or disabling people with generations of genetic crime doesn't fit those values and increases the cost taken away from investing your priorities. You kept secrets that millions of dollars wasted on police terrorizing, injuring, and poisoning folks when instead we should be protecting and serving Portlanders with Portland Street Response 24/7 for all neighborhoods, solving and preventing crimes, paying cops more to harm Portlanders than retire with larger pay and benefits. Immunity and tax on democracy means more Portlanders do not trust or feel obligated to give you more money, cooperation, and power. So you lose the income and increase your costs for bonds, insurance, banking, and lawsuits. Reverse the harm done. Address the underlying contempt for human life and rights that results in increased police and other violence, tax refusal, homelessness, addictions, assaults, murder, suicide, increased insurance and banking fees, and lost investments. Instead, document how each funding and policy choice fits into the pie chart of budget values and fits each grid ranking your values and vote accordingly. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. That's the end of our formal questions, and there are no more public comments. So we thank you all for your contributions today, and I will now end the hearing and open up a regular meeting of the TSCC. Does any commissioner have any comment on the city's budget? If not, I will ask Craig Gibbons, the director, for his recommendations on the certification letter.
We recommend that you certify this City of Portland budget without any objections or recommendations.
Excellent, thank you. May I have a motion authorizing the commission to sign the certification letter as recommended by the staff?
This is Margot. I will move.
I think Mark got there first, Margot. Okay, sounds good. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 The motion carries, and we will sign the certification letter. Thank you all for your time, and some of us will see you next year. Take care. Bye.
Thank you for your thoughtful comments today. Appreciate it.
Thanks. We appreciate your great questions and the discussion. Thank you.